We are on number 14.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, you're right. Okay, let's move on to the 14th waiver request, which is a waiver from section, pardon me, 350-35D of the SALDO, which requires the proposed connector road be offset from all other streets intersecting North Guthrie'sville Road by at least 200 feet. Why is Carlino seeking a waiver from this requirement?
So, the reason Carlino is seeking this waiver from the requirement is the road, the proposed connector road, and I'm pointing to it on the rear end of it towards as it meets in, as it runs into Guthrie'sville Road, and the existing Quail Hill Lane, 133 feet offset, where the code requires the minimum offset to be 200 feet. The reason why we are seeking this waiver is, there are multiple reasons. One, and most important, is the configuration and the location of the connector road, as has been requested by the township, requires the road to come in at certain location, which is shown on the plan. The need, the second is the need for the connector road to tie into Guthrie'sville Road as, on an as close to 90-degree angle as possible. The third is, there is only limited property area available to reconfigure the go, reconfigure the road. Fourth is, existing pond and the wetlands that are on the township condemned property are restricting any reconfiguration.
So then, is it possible to comply with this requirement within the property condemned by the township for the purpose of constructing the connector road?
Not in my opinion, not, not, not in my opinion, and still comply with other requirements.
Let's move on to the 15th waiver request, which is a waiver from section 350-33, capital B and capital C of the SALDO, which require that in order to maintain adequate site distance, the center line radius of the proposed connector road must be 70, must be 750 feet, and provide 100 feet tangent between reverse curves. First of all, explain to us what this is all about, and then tell us why Carlino is seeking a waiver.
So, the section of the code requires a radius on a road to be 750 feet along the connector road, because the street, the connector road, is classified as a collector street. Had it been a local road, it would have been 250-foot requirement. Just, just because connector road, the proposed road, is connecting two state roads, it is classified as a connector road. Although, from a functional point of view, there are only two properties that are getting served. The requirement is to have a 750-foot radius and a minimum 100-foot tangent, tangent being the straight line after the curve ends and the road becomes straight. Before another curve comes, you have to have a 100-foot separation between the two. The reason why we cannot provide the 750-foot radius is precisely the reason that I explained for the offset of the road between Quail Hill and proposed connector. There is, the road cannot be, the road cannot have 750-foot radii and still be in the location where it is shown, which was predetermined by the township, and meet the geometry of the road.
Do you, excuse me, do you have that, do you have Andy Heinrich's comment on that, as far as the location of the road, for that section?
I believe, I believe Andy's November, November, hang on one second. Andy's November 5th letter, he understands the limitation, and he's not adverse to grant of this waiver. Can I just find that for you, one second?
November 2nd?
Yeah, November 5th, my, my bad, November 5th. Yep, it's item number 18, page 6, and I'll read it to you.
It's marked B23, so it's B23 in your binder.
May I read it?
B23 is Heinrich &amp; Klein Associates' Letter of November 5th. That's what you're reading from?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it says, under section number, item number 18, page 6, of November 5th letter, it says, "In its proposed alignment, it is not feasible to provide a 750-foot center line radius for the connector road and also intersect North Guthrie'sville Road at a 90-degree angle. Since proposed connector road terminates at the intersection with Guthrie's, North Guthrie'sville Road, eastbound traffic, traffic will be decelerating through the horizontal curve on approach to the stop sign control intersection. The westbound traffic will be accelerating after turning from the North Guthrie'sville Road. The grant of this waiver is acceptable for the center line radius of 255 feet proposed in this location."
But, do you have it, and where he drew that road where he wanted it? Like, he actually designed where that, where the township wanted that road?
I'm, I'm sorry, that's not part of my case.
That's what he said, that the township depicted.
And, and there's, the Commonwealth Court has found, and Judge Nagel has found, based on testimony and documents, that Andy Heinrich set that road in that location. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into a debate now about that. That, that's, that's been decided by the courts on at least two different occasions.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm-
It's not correct. The court has not determined that. There is no document that reflects that, and in fact, Andy Heinrich, when he testified at an earlier hearing, testified that it was a suggestion he made, but he didn't order or compel the change, the board did.
Okay, well, let me stop this for a second, because Andy Heinrich, I had asked him to be here, I'm not sure where he is, but he will be available, and to the extent a party feels they need to ask him a question, or if Mr. Winters wants to ask him a question, he'll be available to do so.
I certainly am.
So, we don't have to guess.
Thank you.
But my objection is to mark objecting to the question. I believe Mr. Thakkar has repeated, I believe it's 11 times, that the township required the location of the road. So, asking about the location of the road is part of his case, because he made it part of his case. It's a fair question, it's a question I'm gonna be asking as well.
Okay.
So, I don't see why Mr. Winters can't ask the question.
And he asked it. So, I agree, it's a fair question, but this, this witness is not the right person to answer, so Mr. Heinrich will be available. Please proceed.
I, I guess the one final question with regard to this, does the current configuration of the connector road provide adequate site distances to traffic on the road, or those, that traffic intersecting the road?
Yes, it does.
Let's move on to the 16th waiver request, which is a waiver from section 345-311B per N1 of the stormwater ordinance, which requires that storm sewers be placed along the shoulder of the roadway. Why is Carlino seeking a waiver for this requirement?
So, the section of the code requires-
You know, let me, let me come back. I, I didn't explain, that's, doesn't that have to do with a pipe in Guthrie'sville Road?
That is correct.
Okay, so, if, would tell us what this is about.
So, this, this, this section is triggered by the pipe that, the proposed pipe that runs within the bed of Guthrie'sville Road. The code requires that the pipe be placed within, on the backside of the shoulder of Guthrie'sville Road. Now, if you travel Guthrie'sville Road, you know it's a fairly narrow road. However, the reason why we cannot comply is, there is, there are wetlands, and I'm not sure if you can see it on this plan, but if, on your particular copies, you can certainly see it, there are wetlands that come, existing wetlands, on the south side of Guthrie'sville Road, or the west side of Guthrie'sville Road, that are but almost adjacent to the edge of the road. So, there is really no way to install the pipe where there are wetlands. On the north side, there is an existing sanitary sewer force main, just on the edge of the, just beyond the edge of the blacktop. So, there is physically no way to install a storm pipe there, with the force main being there. So, there is an existing limitation with the infrastructure that exists out there.
Okay, let's move on to the 17th waiver request, which is a waiver from section 345-311, capital B, per N2 of the stormwater ordinance, which requires the use of either reinforced concrete pipe or corrugated metal pipe for storm sewers with certain minimum pipe diameters, and permits high-density polyethylene pipe, HDPE, if installed under manufacturer's specifications, and with specific permission from the township engineer. Tell us about this requirement and the waiver that you're requesting.
So, this section of the code requires, there are two items that are dictated. One, as it relates to this plan, one is the use of HDPE pipe, provided it is installed under manufacturer's specification, and with a specific permission from the township engineer. That is one. The second is, the size of the RCP pipe is required to be a minimum diameter of 15 inches. Now, I'll go back to the plan that we were previously on, where we were, we had discussed the previous waiver, where I had explained that there is, there is a pipe that is proposed underneath the proposed connector road, that drains the flows from, the LNRPs coming from the north of the connector road, conveying it underneath the road, and out to the south side into the artificial pond. Because of the limited rideaway, and the configuration of the road, with sidewalks, et cetera, there is only so much space available to grade that road in a certain configuration. We have done what we could do, and the design works from a conveyance standpoint. However, as a result of the existing grades that it needs to pick up, meaning the pipe has to be laid in a certain location, because we have so, only so much rideaway available to, to build this, the pipe has to be 12-inch diameter to provide as much cover as we physically can between the pipe and the top of the road. So, the pipes are two 12-inch pipes versus a 15-inch pipe. From a conveyance standpoint, the pipe does the job. From a planning standpoint, I believe that this is our best option, given the restrictions associated with existing grades, configuration of the road, limitation associated with the condemned property, and the need to drain at the LNRPs.
So, if I boil that down, tell me whether I'm right or not. The waiver or the modification you're requesting is that we use two 12-inch pipes instead of one 15-inch pipe?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, and to use the HDPE, you need Nate's agreement?
We need, correct, that's correct.
But that's not a waiver?
That is not a waiver.
Okay. Excuse me, one second. Look at 67, okay, so we passed that. Now, what's this? 68. Is that, so that's the next one? All right, the next one is a, with regard to 350-36B of the SALDO, which requires certain dimensional requirements for the quote "deceleration lane." Please point out to the board the area of the plan that this relates to.
So, I am flipping to sheet 5 of, 5 of 34, and the area that is in question is the proposed turn lane, and I'm, I'm pointing my finger, it runs parallel to Horseshoe Pike, and it, as it approaches the proposed connector road, signalized intersection with Horseshoe Pike. That is the lane in question, and it is, my opinion, that it is not a deceleration lane, the deceleration lane, the code is very specific, and it, it is related to deceleration lanes. It is, in fact, a turn lane. And I believe Judge Nagel's July 18, 2017 order-
Objection to what he believes Judge Nagel was going to say.
Yeah, I think, again, we've, we've addressed that issue.
He's, wait a second, he's entitled to quote what Judge Nagel said? He's not giving an opinion?
Right, but it's not the best evidence of what Judge Nagel said, and you've already asked that Judge Nagel's opinions be part of the record, so the board can look at Judge Nagel's opinions. I think that's the best way to do it.
I, I understand that, but I want my witness to be able to point the board where to go and what to look at.
Okay, well, now we know that Judge Nagel addressed it, and they can point it. I do have a question, though, and I think it's important to ask it now. Where would we find definitions of decel lane versus right turn lane? Is there something in the SALDO? Is there something in PennDOT regulations? How would we, I'm just curious when, you know, or is it, or is it just based on engineering practice of what's what?
It is, it is based on an engineering practice.
Okay, that's why I was just curious.
The deceleration lanes are when there is, it's not at a signal. When you have an unsignalized driveway that is, has a taper that turns and then allows you to slow down, versus a turn lane where you are at a signal where it's, there's a tendency to turn.
Okay, thank you.
Hence the turn lane.
Okay.
Okay, then, if you're saying this is not applicable, because it's a turn lane and not a deceleration lane, why are we requesting a waiver from this section?
Just in an abundance of caution.
And, let's take it one more step, and if this turn lane is subject to the deceleration lane requirement, why can't Carlino comply with that requirement?
The reason Carlino cannot comply with that requirement is there is only limited space available between the proposed connector road signalized entrance off of Horseshoe Pike, and the existing right out, right in, right out driveway that serves the BVA shopping center.
And would you point to, on the drawing that's on the board, to where that right out exit from the BVA shopping center is located?
Yeah, it's right there, I'm pointing to it.
So, the proximity of that driveway-
That's what we have.
Prohibits the deceleration lane or turning lane from being longer?
That is correct.
Now, regardless of whether this is characterized as a turn lane or a deceleration lane, this, this lane is with the existing or proposed, within either the existing or proposed PennDOT rightaway, isn't it?
That is correct.
So then, the design of this turn lane, deceleration lane, is within the exclusive jurisdiction of PennDOT?
That is correct.
Has PennDOT stated any opposition to the proposed turning lane configuration?
Objection to what PennDOT stated.
I think it's totally relevant.
I mean, I think to the extent that Shrag has had communication with PennDOT about it, and has reports from PennDOT, he can speak to-
Then it should be in the record, and if it's not on the record, it's hearsay.
Well, I mean, the strict rules of evidence aren't, aren't applying in this type of a hearing. They're either under local agency rules, or the MPC, the strict rules of evidence apply. I think that to the extent Shrag has had communications with PennDOT concerning the design of this, he can speak to, if you know, if anybody, just, if you know, has somebody voiced an objection to this, from PennDOT.
No, not currently.
That's all.
Okay, let's move on to the 19th and last waiver, which is a waiver from section 3501-13 of the SALDO, which is the section governing preliminary plan submission. Is there any prohibition contained in the SALDO against the submission of a preliminary plan and a final plan at the same time?
No, there is not.
So, why are we asking for a waiver?
In an abundance of caution.
And does this plan, in your opinion, meet the requirements of both preliminary plan and final plan?
Yes, it does. It's, it's evidenced by Nate Klein's last review letter, and you can run through the list, it's, most of the items are addressed. There are only a couple items that are administrative in nature regarding board's determination, and few items, recreational fees, things like that. Same thing with Andy Heinrich's letters of November 5th. I believe most of the comments are addressed. Whatever is not addressed or has outstanding is, is cursory, related to some signage, and, you know, post-construction, I mean, post-approval outside agency comments.
Okay, now, there is one other item that I would like to go over with you, and it's not a waiver. Section 399-79B per N2 of the zoning ordinance provides, quote, "minimum guide," I'm sorry, "minimum planning guidelines," quote, end quote, and quote, "landscape design guidelines." The section also permits the applicant to undertake other design measures where the proposed improvements do not strictly adhere to these guidelines, subject to port, the board's approval. Please explain to the board the nature of the landscaping proposed in connection with this proposed development, and your history with that alternate proposal.
So, I am looking at sheet 10 of 34, which is the Post Constructors' Stormwater Management Landscape Planting Plan, which shows the amount and type of landscaping that is proposed, both on the Carlino piece, as well as on the area condemned by the township on the rear side towards Guthrie'sville Road. So, I'd like to just quantify some numbers, if I may. There is, there are, the plan proposes approximately 244 deciduous trees, 883 shrubs, deciduous shrubs, 89 evergreen trees, and 447 evergreen shrubs. On a property-
What's the last number?
447.
447, what?
Evergreen shrubs.
Evergreen shrubs, okay, thank you.
On a property which is 10 acres, which is the Carlino parcel, plus the two acres on the backside, so call it 12 acres, with the connector road, three-lane connector road being part of that, and comply with the zoning ordinance in terms of parking, setbacks, utilities, et cetera. The plan shows a fairly dense landscaping for a typical shopping center. Just the amount of vegetation that is proposed, yeah, and the numbers that I just read, is very, very dense from a commercial standpoint. More importantly, the, the previous plan, which was reviewed by Tom Comer, who's the landscape architect hired by the township, had found that plan to be more than adequate.
Objection, just, Adam Solicitor, and please, let's treat it as a continuing objection to these continual references to prior plans, and prior approvals, and prior reviews of prior plans.
Mr. Prince, your, your objection's noted, and as I said before, the board can determine what weight, if any, to give that, but the board understands that they are the board that has to grant the modification to this particular landscaping requirement, so.
Go ahead, Shrag.
So, just a quick statement, that Tom had found that to be more than adequate. I believe Nate's comment letter does not say we need more, he's just looking for the board's discretion onto the, onto the planting guideline.
I want you to go a little bit further, so that the board knows. So, talk to us about your interaction with Tom Comer over the years, in, in coming to the conclusion of, of this landscape plan as being adequate.
Yes, so, I have had, as part of the previous plan, we have had many conversations and, and coordination with, with Tom. I believe he has, he had me comments in, at a Planning Commission meeting a few times, and he, he had mentioned, at one of the-
What'd he mention?
-Planning Commission meetings, that the plan is as dense as it could get. I have a letter from him dated May 30, 2017, and I can, if I can-
Would you read it?
Yeah, if I can-
There's an objection to it.
Objection.
I, I think that the township understands that in prior applications, the township had a landscape architect who you worked with on that. I, I don't think we need to say more than that. I, we'll ask you, though, on this particular go-around with the Planning Commission, was there conversation or discussion concerning, or did you highlight the landscaping to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, the Planning Commission reviewed the landscaping plan as part of the overall set. They didn't have any specific condition except one, which was the removal of the planting diamonds, and I'm gonna point to them on the screen. So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. So, these were the diamonds that were planting diamonds proposed within the parking field, which was at the request of the Planning Commission during the prior plan. During the last November hearing, Planning Commission wanted that those diamonds to be removed, the parking spaces to be turned into a full 10-by-20 parking spaces, and the seven trees that were proposed within that planting diamonds to be relocated towards the Waters Residential, towards the left side of the page, or the north side of the page. So, yes, there was, this was, there was a discussion about that. I believe Planning Commission's recommendation includes-
Adam Chairman, I think you have the minutes with the Planning Commission.
Okay, so I've, my question was whether the, I didn't go to the Planning Commission minute, meeting, Mr. Prince, I'm just asking him whether the Planning Commission addressed landscaping, that's it. He answered the question, he said yes, they asked him about the islands. That's it, we don't need any more.
He's the one giving more.
Okay, I'm just saying, but you were objecting to me asking the question, I didn't, I wasn't at the Planning Commission.
No, I did not object to you asking the question, I'm objecting to his answer, because you have as an exhibit the minutes. He's giving his interpretation of what was said and what was done.
Well, but he did it, he did it in response to my question, so, thank you for responding to the question, we will look at the minutes for the details of what was, what occurred. So, I think we're done with that.
Just one more item, in addition to what I just mentioned, is that the proposed site, as I previously mentioned, is sits lower than the surrounding properties, specifically Horseshoe Pike, Waters Residential property, and to certain extent, BVA's retained piece on the north side. As a result, the, the shopping center is gonna be lower than the surrounding residential property, so it is not going to be visually obstructive to those property. Had it been upside down, where the shopping center was higher, then I could understand that it, it's more stick-up as a, as a, as a larger building, but it, because it's relatively lower than the surrounding grade, it's, it tends to buffer the effect of the parking lots and buildings.
I have no further questions for Shrag.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm first.
Orlando's gonna go? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Thakkar, which, which sheet of B3, your, your plan, would show existing conditions? Could that be 3, sheet 3?
Drawing 03.00, I believe it's sheet 2.
Mr. Orlando, I do have the full-size plan, if that helps you.
That doesn't help me.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you say sheet 2?
Sheet 2 of 34.
Okay, thanks. So, will you open the sheet 2, please?
I have it.
Great, thanks. So, the existing conditions for the site that we are discussing this morning, as I look at sheet 2, the only thing that exists on it now is the current ingress and egress to the Brandywine Road Shopping Center, is that correct?
That is correct, that is correct.
And then there's a stormwater basin there, but I mean, as, as far as physical improvements, it's, it's only the BVA access road, right?
Yes. And this, and the sewage treatment plan is shown on the survey, and the sewage treatment plan on the backside.
Right, but that has been removed, correct?
That is correct.
So, that's now grass or dirt or?
Yes.
Not there. Would sheet 5, which shows the proposed develop- Would Sheet 5, which shows the proposed development, also show the area of the BVA current entrance? Can you see that? Can you see the BVA current entrance?
Yes.
On Sheet 5?
Yes.
It's, it's the lighter line, but it sort of curves around there?
Yes.
So, am I correct that in the preparation of Sheet 5, you are showing the proposed connector road, and it is to the east of, as far as the area where it intersects 322, it's to the east of the existing BVA entrance? Am I correct?
Yes.
Hey, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand that. I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, you didn't have to, because he did any, any answer.
I understand, but I gotta, I gotta follow. East of what?
E, the current connector road is east of the current BVA entrance.
Oh, current BVA entrance. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all I asked, Mark. Who from the township told you that the township insisted on locating the proposed connector road on 5 in the exact location that you show it on that plan?
Well, this plan has evolved through multiple reviews.
That's not what I asked you, sir. Please don't tell me about the plan. I said, who from the township told you that the location of the connector road had to be in the location that you show on Sheet 5? That's, I'm asking for the name of a person.
Andy Heinrich has made numerous comments through the history of this project about where this road needs to be, how it needs to hug the property line, why it needs to be further away from Bullinger Road, et cetera.
So, it's your testimony that Andy Heinrich is requiring that it be physically located right there? Is that correct?
Andy Heinrich has made comments.
Yes or no?
Which resulted in that plan.
I did not ask you how many comments he made. I asked you your testimony.
Orlando's answering the question. You can't, you can't dictate how he answers the question. He answered your question. If he, he gets to expound upon the answer so the board understands it.
But I get the answer first. He didn't answer.
He did answer it. He said Andy Heinrich.
Wasn't the question, Madam?
Yes, it was. He said, he specifically said, "Name a person." So, he named the person.
I think you were shouting, and that's how the board.
Okay, I apologize.
Anyone else, or is it just Andy?
Andy Heinrich is primarily the person that is, that took the review of the traffic plans, had made comments, extensive comments about where the road needs to be and the configuration of the road.
Okay. Is there any reason, absent what you're now telling us, that Heinrich is insisting that it be right there in that location, is there any reason that, from a design standpoint, that it couldn't be located somewhere else?
Excuse me. I'm going to object.
Great question.
I had Mr., I had Shikar, Sharag testify to waivers and modifications.
That's not, it's in front of us.
That's all he testified to. This, the argument that they want to make about where, how the road got there is beyond his testimony.
Well, I think it's a fair question, given that some of the responses as to why the waivers were justified was because of the location of the connector road being stuck where it is. But let me, can I just ask something? I think it's relevant. Isn't the location of the connector road shown in the location on these plans based on what land area the township condemned?
That is correct, on the back piece.
Okay, on the back piece, okay.
As well as, I believe, the exhibit that is included in the MOU had this configuration of the road.
Actually, I was going to get there, if I could continue with my question.
Please do.
No, I, I, excuse me for one second. I'd just like to make a point here. You have prohibited us from bringing in materials from prior applications. Now, now Gene is asking about the history of how the road got there. There is a common, pleased court opinion that says that on August, on, on August 2nd, 210, Mr. Pierceall wrote to Carlino's representatives on the subject of the connector road. In that letter, he indicated the township was agreeable to accepting dedication and maintenance responsibilities.
I'm not trying to be rude, but you're allowing him to speak to the connector road. There's not even a question in front of the.
Please stop for a second. It seems to me that this line of questioning is best directed to Andy Heinrich.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's not, I didn't even have a question, and you're allowing him to speak. I want to ask him about this plan, which is the plan in front of this floor.
Out who's shouting? Say it. What is your question?
Apparently, I have to, because I'd like to get a question.
Hold on, because I want to correct something. I don't think we said that we wouldn't take any testimony about prior plans. I, what I said is, they are aware of.
I did not ask about a prior plan.
I'm correcting something that Mr. Kaplan said, Mr. Orlando. Please let me speak. He indicated that the board is prohibiting any evidence or testimony about prior plans. That's not what I stated, and if I did, I, what I mean is that the board is aware of the prior plans. You've put in the record all the decisions. They have that to read, they're aware of it, and they can read it again. What weight they're going to give that will be determined in the decision. That's what I meant by that. What is your question to this witness relating to the waiver?
Sheet 5, Mr. Thakkar, where the existing BVA entrance is now. It's the, the lighter line that you mentioned a few minutes ago, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That is the area that the township condemned in its condemnation. Am I correct? Which is to the west of the proposed connector road.
Yes.
Yes or no, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, can I ask you, please? You mentioned repeatedly.
I may interrupt you. A point of privilege, Madam Secretary.
Well, there is no such thing as a point of privilege.
You said, in your comments, a minute ago, you said that his booklet with the decisions is in the record. It is not in the record. It hasn't been moved. I just want that clarified.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, what I told you before, what I said before is that I think this board can take judicial notice of decisions that have been rendered, that are relevant to this property in this township. So, I would say that the board can take judicial notice of them, whether they're admitted or not.
Going forward, the other thing, if, if we're going to reference east-west on the, on the map, I think that, Mr. Orlando, so we don't have this discussion where we get confused, I think you should come up and physically point on the map so that we can see. So, I mean, just because Mr. Sharag understands doesn't mean.
Happy to do that.
If you don't mind.
Nope, not a bit, thanks.
Just because it, it does get confusing when you're talking about unshaded versus shaded on different maps.
No, that's, off the record. 322 runs east-west.
No, but when you're talking about some of these shaded areas, some of these maps are, are shaded.
And frankly, I, I don't do good with east and west. I'm better with north and south, so. Mr. Thakkar.
Yes.
We're looking at Sheet 5 of 34, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the north arrow, the way I understand it, is going this way, so when I was saying east-west, north-south, let's forget all that, as Mr. Schindler thankfully points out. However, the geographical direction is, is the area to the left of where you show the proposed connector road as it intersects with Route 322 to the left, is that the existing BVA entrance?
Yes.
And is that the area that was condemned by the township?
If you know.
I, I'm not 100% about the condemnation, but that's.
Well, you testified to it before, so.
Yeah.
Were you not sure then, when you asked on direct, because this is where the township condemned, and this is where you had to put the arrow?
No, I was, I was pointing to the rear piece. I did not point to the easements condemned. I didn't think I ever said in my testimony that the easements were condemned, in my direct testimony.
Okay.
I believe your question is related to the easement, correct?
I'm asking you.
Yes. So, I did not testify directly to that effect.
So, you don't know? Is that what your testimony did?
Objection. How's it relevant whether he knows what easements were?
And I'd like the question spelled out. You're asking him directly if he understands the condemnation of, and again, point to the map of which parcel you're, you're speaking to, so we're all on the same page.
Well, and, and, yes, I'm asking, Mr. Thakkar, as I point here, this, you've identified the area with my fingers gone up and down, that that's the current entrance to the BVA Shopping Center. Do we agree on that?
Yes.
Okay, and I asked you whether or not that is the area that was condemned by the township.
Objection again.
There is no easement area shown with that on this plan.
I didn't ask about whether there's an easement arrow. I asked whether or not that physical area in this plan is the area that was condemned by the township. I'm trying to clarify the question that the solicitor asked you.
And I, I objected.
And if he doesn't know the answer, he doesn't know the answer.
He already said that he's not sure about what the condemnation of the easement.
This is cross-examination. I can ask the question more than once.
I would have to agree with Mr. Kaplan. He did say he wasn't sure of, of what was condemnation.
You don't know.
I am not sure as to what those easements, what exactly you are saying in terms of easement that was condemned.
I didn't use the word easement. You did. I was asking about the BVA access. If you don't know, we'll gladly move on.
Objection. And, ask and answer.
He just said he's going to move on. He just said he's moving on.
Okay.
So, can we look at your letter, which I believe is B7?
Yes, that's right.
I'll come back.
His letter's B6.
As long as I'm allowed to come back, I'll be happy.
Sharag's letter is B6.
What's the date on that?
November 7, 2018.
Take that.
Behind B6 tab.
I'm sorry, I'm, I got, I guess I got my numbers mixed up.
Six.
The, six.
Okay.
It would be your letter.
I found it. November 7.
Okay, great. And I'd like to ask you about some of the waiver testimony that you've just presented.
Gene, that's not the current waiver request. My letter is the current waiver request.
I'm, I'm going to ask about both, Mark, so.
Okay. I just want you to understand.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The, if we could look at, I believe it's Item 5 in both your letter and in Mark's letter. Let me make sure of that. The waiver request of Section 350.40.N, as in Nancy, paren 2.
Is number 5 in there?
Do you see that in, do you see that in your letter on B6?
Yes, I see it.
I think it's on page 2.
Yep, I see it.
The reason I asked about your letter is, your letter states, in the last sentence, that the literal enforcement would frustrate the effects of improvements that have been designed to implement other requirements. Please tell me what other requirements they would frustrate by complying with the SALDO section, specifically on your plan, please.
Sure.
And if, so I, if I come back over and you can.
Can you answer the question?
I, I can expand. Either way, it's your choice.
Okay.
What we, if we were to provide a 30-foot, what I meant by that, and I think I testified indirect, was if we were to provide a 30-foot radius on those two locations, the curb would end up on BVA's property.
Well, let me ask about that. That assumes that the road cannot move further to the left on the plan, which I think would be to the, to the west. Your, your answer just assumes that the road has to stay right there, it can't move a little bit to the left. Am I correct?
That is correct.
All right, so if the road were to move a little bit to the left, you can meet the 30-foot radius, can you not?
The road, but the road cannot move, is what I'm trying to say.
No, I'm asking you.
No, no, let him answer.
I am answering it.
No, you're not, sir. If the road were to physically move, you can make that radius, can you not? If you can move the road left, if the road goes over here instead of.
Not without, which is what I said, which is what exactly the language is, not without frustrating other requirements of the code.
What other requirements? Please tell me the sections that are frustrated.
Okay, so, when you move the road over, first of all, this location that we are talking about, this plan, and you know better than anybody else, this road has been reviewed and commented for months and years. Configuration of the road as is, has been set in, in terms of reviews, penned-up applications, et cetera.
Excuse me, I think that road, though.
Whoa.
Jason, let him finish.
Don't interrupt him, please.
So, there's, there's.
He's answering a question.
I was going to make it easier for him.
No, you, you don't get to make it easier for us.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know Mr. Kaplan was ready.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, if the road moves, there is only a limited area that is condemned on the backside.
Okay, so.
We cannot jog a road.
No. But again, you show me on Sheet 2 of your plan, the existing area of the lot, and the only thing on it is a roadway, which you're eliminating in Sheet 5. So, physically, I'm asking, why can't the road be moved a few feet in order to gain the radii that's required under that SALDO section?
I believe I answered.
Okay. Now, you mentioned, I think you used the term "artificial pond" every time you referred to the pond area that's shown in the area condemned by the township, correct?
Yes.
What do you mean by "artificial pond"?
That is what the pond is noted as being on the survey, and that is what the pond is noted as being in the wetlands report.
And so, "artificial pond" means it's not really a pond, and we could get rid of it if we wanted to?
It's a man-made pond.
Okay, so it can be unmanned?
Objection. What's the relevance?
It's a question. He's asking a question. Can it be unmanned made? Yes or no?
It could be unmanned made.
Okay, so, so the area apro, apropos your earlier testimony, that's why I'm asking. You indicated that there were a number of things that because of the location of the road, because of the geometry of the road, because of this, in terms of where the road is in the area condemned by the township, you maintained that you needed certain waivers. You've also indicated that the pond is artificial, so if it can be unmanned made, what stops you from moving the road in the area condemned by the township, either closer to or even over where the artificial pond is? Is there anything physically that stops it?
Okay, so let me, let me, yes, let me elaborate that. You can physically unmanned made the pond, which basically you're saying in layman's turn, remove the pond. However, a few things that you should note, and I think LTL has brought it up in the review, and so has Nate in the response, this pond acts as a spillover to the wetlands. Okay? What we have done between existing and proposed is maintain that configuration, meaning after everything is built, the pond will still serve as an upstream spillover, thereby maintaining the hydrology. If you wipe that pond off, you're directly impacting the upstream hydrology of the wetlands. So, it, it could be done, but it doesn't come without consequences.
Where are, where are the wetlands upstream of the pond?
Right there is the wetlands.
Upstream of the pond, that's downstream.
Pond's upstream of the wetlands, which is what feeds the wetlands. The pond feeds the wetlands downstream.
Well, you said it's artificial.
Yes.
So.
But it serves hydrology.
Now, apropos, the requirement that you referred to, but going back to Item Number 5 in your letter, and Item, which is B6, and Item 5 in Mark's letter, which is B7, it's the same waiver request, and the same language, which I think comes out of the Levin case, "literal enforcement would require the, would have been, frustrate effects of improvements designed into other requirements." Now, apropos, the, going back to the radii, which is the one we're talking about before we talked about the pond, you're frustrated, the requirement that frustrates is, the road would have to move, and you don't think it can because it's been required. Did I get that right? The, the requirement frustrated by. The requirement frustrated by requiring the 30-foot radii.
No, that is what you said. What your question was hypothetically assume the road could move. If so, does it frustrate any other thing? What I said was that it does because on the backside, on the LNRP side, the condemned land is limited. That's where the road needs to go. That's where it needs to connect.
So maybe...
So if you just jog the road on the Carlino piece, it just can't go right into the LNRPs. That's what I was trying to go at. It was the configuration, geometry I was trying to go at.
Okay. Maybe I didn't get the answer correctly. So if we changed road geometry so that it could jog correctly, that would involve moving or relocating the road physically on the plan? Did I understand what you just...
Would you please repeat that?
Sure. You're saying that because of the location, you can't get this radii. You could get it if you moved it over, but if you moved it over here, it would create a problem on where the road is on the LNRPs.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
If you... This radius, and I'm pointing to the right end radius going into BVA Shopping Center, or the south side of the internal intersection as you come off of horseshoe pike, the first unsignalized intersection, the second quadrant, if you will, of that, that radius is at 46 feet.
But that's what we're talking about.
I'm coming to it. I'm coming to answer your question. What happens is hypothetically, and we're bringing hypotheticals here, if I move the road five feet or seven feet, whatever it takes to cure a 30-foot radius here, what you also end up doing is there is a reverse curve here from which we are seeking waiver from. You're going to make that condition even worse. So that's what I meant when it says it frustrates the effect. I think that your fundamental question was what is that frustrating effect?
That's exactly right. So that's very helpful. Thank you. So the idea is because of the design of the roadway as you have it located, that's the thing that's frustrating?
That is correct. I would like to make one more point, if I can, of is that the radiuses that are not 30 feet but are 25 feet, and we are seeking modifications on, are not the turns that the trucks are gonna make. It is fundamental to know that that is where the automobile, the normal passenger car, is anticipated to go. The trucks are making lefts, left out, either coming out of the BVA front driveway and going in, and therefore impacts this side of the radius, not that side. Similarly, if BVA were ever to agree to this connection on their property, if the trucks were to start using that, they are also going in and out of that driveway. So not the radius that is under question.
Let me ask you. How do you know that a truck would not go into BVA, make a delivery, and then come out and go up to the Giant to make a delivery? How do you know the truck's not gonna use that?
The BVA... Because Giants serve their own deliveries. They have their own trucks. Giant does not deliver to...
Okay, so now you're...
It's not a FedEx. It's not a FedEx on tractor-trailer. It's a grocery store that gets delivered, just like you see any other day, a Giant truck delivering deliveries to their store.
Do you work for Giant?
No, but I have shopped Giant many times.
Me too. But the question I have is how did... You're making an assumption based on what you think today about based on who you think the current tenant is. But when I sit with my township engineers, they say, well, you know what happens if this isn't a Giant, it turns out to be a Redner's, or maybe this turns into something else. The bottom line is, when you're talking about a road, aren't we worried about what the road needs to function as regardless of who the tenant is on these sites? And apropos that, how do you know? How can anyone know that trucks aren't gonna need to make those turns?
Objection, compound question.
Can you answer the question?
I don't think that was a compound question, but I know...
Can you answer it?
Okay. So I am answering to the plan that is in front of us and to the tenant that we know is in front of us as far as Giant is concerned. And I know how they operate, how any big grocer operates. They don't do deliveries for other people on the trucks along the way.
Fair enough. All right. So let me go on to another question about your waivers. Next one I'd like to ask you about is, I think it's number eight on Mark's... I'm sorry, Mr. Kaplan's B7, and eight on yours, which is B6. What... Same question. What is the improvements that are frustrated by the requirements of complying with that section?
I believe I had mentioned that in my testimony, there is physically no room beyond the condemned property to put a tree. If the tree would then be located on the LNRPs.
And am I correct, based on what you just told me a few minutes ago about the first waiver I asked you, that if it were possible to configure a road that would be further into the area condemned by the township, then you would be able to meet that waiver, would you not? I mean, meet that requirement?
No. So let me answer that question. You bring up a great point. Regarding frustrating effects, if you recollect, we are also requesting a waiver from the proposed connector road being 133 feet away from Quail Hill Drive. Remember the waiver that we're seeking? What you are suggesting would then frustrate that effect because that proposed road would now be even closer than 133 feet. That is what I meant by what I said in my item number eight.
Thank you. All right. Would you please look? I think it is item 14 in your letter, and I think also in Mark's. That's the one I think you just brought up, right?
Yes.
It's section 350.35D. And if I understand what you just said, that if we shifted the road further into the township condemned area, and we're moving closer to Quail Hill Road, which then shortens that area, am I correct?
Yes.
But this one talks about an area from Quail Hill. What about... Why couldn't we just line it up right across from Quail Hill and eliminate this altogether?
Okay. So let me understand what you're saying. What you're saying is that instead of the offset that is there, proposed offset between Quail Hill and Road A, Connector Road, you want to bring it at a four-way intersection at Guthrie's Road.
Well, I'm asking, why couldn't we do that?
Yes. But I wanted to make sure that's what you're asking.
That was my question. Yes, sir.
The reason we can't do that is there is only X number of square feet or linear feet of space available to bend the road. By the time you... If you come up here, I can explain you.
Great.
So by the time, and I'll get to the frustrating effect very quickly.
Okay.
By the time, because this is a connector road, not a driveway, it has to have a certain radius, right? And it's got three-link configuration, as you can see. By the time you put a radius on it like this...
You have to explain that, Shrag. The court reporter can't.
I'm sorry. All right. So by the time...
Excuse me. Shrag, Madam Solicitor, could he draw on his and then submit the drawing or use one of the ones from the book in your exhibit book? Can he mark on that so it's clear what he was drawing?
Yeah, if he has a red pen or something colored.
This is my set with my notes and stuff on it.
Just take a small set. Take the small set in the book. It's B3. It's the plan that you're on, and draw on that.
And then can we all use that and mark it, and then we can mark it as an exhibit and add it?
Sure.
Then everybody will know in the future what we were talking about.
Sure. Let's just mark it now so it's clear. We'll mark it B39. So Shrag, when you get to it, please tell us what...
It's not in here.
It's not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I found it. My bad.
Tell me what page you're on.
Five of 34.
Okay. So B39 will be page five of 34 of Land Development Plans. It's an 11 by 17, which was taken out of B3.
Okay.
Okay. So do you have a colored pen of some sort or just regular pen?
I have a black.
Okay. Now he's using a red pen.
All right. So...
Give me that sheet again, Shrag.
Page five of 34.
Five of 34. Oh, this one is hard to see the Quail Hill.
B39.
Yeah, the Quail Hill doesn't show up good on this. But go ahead, Shrag.
Yeah, you understand.
Hold on. One person, Shrag.
I think I followed.
The court reporter needs to hear you.
I'm sorry. Quail Hill is not printed very clearly on this plan, so I just was making a note to Mr. Orlando that it is slightly hard to see, but Mr. Orlando said it is fine. He's following me.
So far.
So... So...
I'm only a lawyer.
Yeah. So what I am showing here with this red line is the right-of-way, which is 50 feet. This is Quail Hill. In order to have a radius...
Excuse me, Shrag. Could you move it up a little further?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Okay. In order to have a 90-degree connection, and I'm... This is an estimate, okay? So this is as good as a cartoon. Okay? This is what it would do. All right. So now I'll explain you what I mean by the frustrating effect. It's hard to see on this. I'm gonna refer to the larger drawing.
Mm-hmm.
You see this BVA driveway, the rear access, that is existing? If we were to put this radii on, you will clip the rear portion of BVA property. The road, thereby its right-of-way, by cartway, by its grading, stormwater infrastructure, sidewalk, guide rails, there's multiple things that go with the road assembly, is what I call it. It's not the road. It's got other things that go with it.
Understood.
Physically, it would go into... It's my estimation, based on this sketch, that it would end up being on BVA's property. Plus, you now have a BVA's existing driveway on a sharp radii because you see that? This is their driveway? It's on a very sharp bend.
But that assumes that the rest of the road stays where you're showing it. If we move the rest of the road and designed it in the open field, that is your client's property at the moment, you could make that curve work, could you not?
I'm gonna object to this total line of questioning. This has gone on and on and on about if we move the road. That's not a possibility based on the facts that are in evidence. The facts that are in evidence is that this is where the road was dictated by the township, and we've spent eight or nine years working on that. To come here, to come here now and to start cross-examining this witness who's asking about waivers from a specific plan, to ask about a hypothetical just doesn't make any sense. And I don't see... My specific objection is it's just not relevant to what we have presented with Shrag's testimony.
First of all, although Mark keeps repeating it, and he put it 90 million times in his paperwork, the issue of who required the location of the road on a plan that's not owned by the township is relevant, and the waiver issue... Okay? Waiver requires a hardship. Waiver requires an inability to meet designs. It is fair cross-examination to suggest alternatives as to how to meet those requirements to avoid a waiver. You're gonna have to find, the three of you, to the extent that all three of you vote, are going to have to affirmatively find that there is a hardship relative to the property that requires or justifies the grant of a waiver, and that the grant of the waiver that the design achieves some other benefit to the township in terms of an improvement. This question and other questions, which I intend to ask on the other waivers relating to this road, is directly relevant. In fact, if I was sitting on the other side of the table, I'd wanna have a lot more of these questions.
Well, I'd like to... I'd like to respond to that.
May I first make a statement on behalf of BVA?
I'd like to respond to that.
All right. Let...
Mr. Kaplan should respond first. It was his objection that Mr. Orlando responded to.
So document number one in our binder on page 27, this is Judge Nagel's opinion. I'm sorry, Griffith's opinion. Carlino's original design called for the connector road to follow the access easement and exit onto SR 322 at the present signalization. Under this plan, Carlino's bank pad and parking were entirely outside the BVA easements and could be built by right and without township assistance. Andreas Heinrich, township's traffic engineer and transportation planner, insisted that the location of the bank pad site and connector roads be reversed. Mr. Heinrich testified that doing so was necessary to maximize the distance between the signals along 322, to avoid an unsafe traffic pattern within the bank parking lot, and to align the connector road with the property boundary, which is a traffic engineering best practice. The result of this relocation is although a fraction of Carlino's proposed bank and some parking will be located on land that is presently a BVA access easement, Carlino receives no benefit from that. You have a judge who made a decision, and that decision was affirmed by the Commonwealth Court, and it says that Heinrich insisted. And we're sitting here with these two gentlemen arguing that Heinrich didn't insist. They've gotta undo this opinion, and they can't do it, and you should take judicial notice of that. You should take administrative notice of this and put an end to this nonsense about arguing about who put the road there.
Well, I think we said we will take judicial notice of the decisions. I do think it's a fair question for him to say, could the part that's not in the condemned land be shifted? And if the answer is no, because this is where the township engineer approved it at, and this is where they like the design there, then that's the answer. I think he's already given some of that answer.
I've already said it.
Right. So I don't know why these objections are coming up now, because I think the questions have been asked and the answers have been provided. So it seems to me like we would wanna move on.
May I now voice my answer?
Do you have... There's no answer. Do you have an objection?
I have a response to this objection.
But you don't have... You're not making the... You're not doing the cross-examination. He's the one that made an objection to a question being asked. I don't know what you have to say into it.
I'm a different party. I'm entitled to have my response to the objection.
We've already ruled upon the objection anyway. We said that the questions have already been asked, and they've already been answered.
Madam Solicitor, I asked you for an opportunity to provide it, and you said after Mr. Kaplan provided a response. I have yet to voice a comment on the matter. I would like to comment on the objection.
But Mr. Prince, but Mr. Prince, what I said was, it seems to me that the objection can be withdrawn because the questions have been asked and the answers have been provided.
Are you denying me an opportunity?
Go ahead. Say what you need to say, Mr. Prince, please.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor. You have ruled that this is a new application.
I've not ruled that. Everyone knows it's a new application. That's not my ruling. It is a new application.
I beg your pardon. It's a new application. I'll be happy to show you in the minutes of the township where you referred to it as a new application, which will be considered as a new application.
It is.
And must meet township ordinances.
No doubt about it.
May I, you know, I could continue this and make the remarks much quicker. So simply put, you have a blank slate, and they have to come in and give you a plan that meets your ordinances. The question is, have they done that? This is their plan. They decide where they want the road.
I know.
Decide where they want it designed.
It's just another speech.
So that questions with regard to whether or not it can be designed in some other fashion, and meet your ordinances are entirely appropriate.
And that's what we've decided, we've decided that. The questions were asked and the answers were provided. I think we can move on.
Can I say something? I asked, I asked Andy Heimer this question, and he said that the road way back...
Let's wait till Mr. Heinreich comes. If you have a question, he's supposed to be here.
So now this is, this is testimony from Mr. Winter.
Right, and that's why I stopped it, Mr. Kaplan. I stopped it because I would like the question to be directed to the person who is appropriate to answer, which is Mr. Heinreich. It's important for Mr. Heinreich to give the answer to the question. I don't want you to give hearsay testimony or read from something when he's not here. I just think it's better to have it come from him.
Just a reminder, we have about seven to eight minutes, so I don't want to cut you off mid-thought, so just to let you know, we have about seven, eight minutes before...
You want to go early?
No, 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 no. Finish it. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
I'm not going to finish in seven minutes.
But you want to get the one or two more questions out?
Be happy to, if I can. How about, let's, let's try to wrap up here. This is all of the hoopla. I'm not exactly sure. You did answer the question, but on the issue of the alignment with Quail Hill, which, which was, that's three fifty thirty-five D, right, Mr. Thacker?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. It's your belief that the road cannot be designed to comply with that section, and therefore the waiver is required based on the geometry of the road as you presented it on the plan. Did I accurately state that?
Yes.
So let's take a look then, please, at, I think it's your item fifteen, and it might be Mark's. I think the numbers are pretty close to the same. Let's just double check.
My, you said my, my number...
I think your item was number fifteen.
What was, was exhibit six, right?
Yes, I have exhibit six, yes, sir.
Okay, and what was my number you said? I'm sorry.
Let me, let me look. I'll find it for sure.
They're the same. They're corresponding. Section three fifty dash thirty-three, B and C.
Okay, yep, you're right. I have it.
Okay, great. So that's another one of those where you said that something's frustrating, right? You can't make the tangent work between the reverse curves. And that's, you need the reverse curve because of the road alignment.
Correct.
Now the... Can this be solved from an engineering perspective on this site?
I am not sure if I understand the question. What does that mean, solved?
Can you avoid asking for this waiver?
No, we cannot.
And why not?
Well, as I had testified, um, and so there, on this location...
You need to explain what you mean by this location.
I'm sorry, the rear portion of the connector, the proposed connector road, I'm sorry, I'm pushing it. Connector road, because I want that to come on the screen.
I'm sorry.
And, and as it ties into North Guthrie'sville Road. That area has a two-hundred-and-fifty-five-foot radius, and there is no physical way to put a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius on that road and still be within the right-of-way, not, I'm sorry, not right-of-way condemned property, be able to intersect Guthrie'sville Road at a ninety-degree angle. It's physically not possible. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius is a very large radius that you see on large state routes. And the reason we get kicked into it, which I said in my direct testimony, is purely because North Guthrie'sville Road and three twenty-two are state roads, and this is the connection in between the two. But it serves two properties. Physically, there is not enough land to provide a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius.
But if you're already asking for that waiver, why would it matter if you lined it up to Quail Hill? You don't have to worry about the site distance of the road at that point.
I'm going to object to this. My witness is under cross-examination and...
I can ask a question. I'm on the board.
Not, not in the middle of his testimony while he's being cross-examined by somebody else.
I should be able to ask a question when I see fit, so I don't forget it. I thought we decided this before it started.
Yeah, we, we talked about this before, that if it makes sense, given the testimony now, while we're focusing very specifically on a design parameter, it makes sense for him to get clarification. I think that's appropriate.
Asking for the waiver, why would it matter?
I believe your question was identical to what Mr. Orlando's question was, where he had, where I put this sketch together. That's what your question is. Why can't it go at a four-way intersection? Is proposed road going to Quail Hill at a four-way intersection? Is that your question?
It's a site distance, but you're already asking for another waiver on that, so why would that matter at that point?
There isn't a statement about site distance?
Seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of a, of a radius.
Well, they're two different things.
I'm sorry, I just, thank you for correcting me. The rate, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius.
Shrag, repeat what you said about you couldn't have it come to a four-way intersection because what? What would you not be able to comply with if you did that?
The seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius, which is the basis of our relief.
So if you comply with one, it kicks you over and makes you non-compliant with another section, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, understood.
And...
And you would also, as I was sketching, this would also start going over portions of BVA's property. Based on my, I mean, I'm, this is hand sketch here, but I haven't engineered that.
And you need both of those waivers because of the configuration of the road as you've shown it.
Which both waivers? Can you please let me know?
The alignment of, let me read them.
Because the, because the section number fifteen has two waivers in it, therefore I'm asking what two waivers you're talking about.
I was, then I should have said three waivers.
Okay.
The, the ones we're just talking about, three fifty thirty-three B and C and the three fifty thirty-five D. You need, you need all three of those waivers due to the exact layout of this road on this plan.
And other things, and other things that are testified. Yes, you're correct.
That was a good time to break? Okay. All right, so it's twelve-thirty right now. We'll reconvene at one-thirty, and I'm assuming you want to start back up with...
I would like to, yes.
All right, we'll start back up with Mr. Shrag.
Thanks, Shrag.
All right, thank you.